Seeing a presence of a quorum, call this meeting of the Amherst School Committee to order at 6:23 PM. This is a very brief meeting for tonight, prior to our Regional School Committee meeting, and the purpose of this meeting is to vote to approve warrants, which is part of our new process that the Amherst School Committee just recently adopted. And it's a slightly different process than we've had previously. And just as a reminder, this meeting is recorded and live broadcast by Amherst Media. I'm going to hand out right now to our school committee members the warrant report that was submitted by our Finance Director, Sean Mangano, just a short while ago. And Mr. Mangano, I'm going to ask if you don't mind just walking us quickly through this, so it's our very first time that we're reviewing this in public.
So, thank you.
It doesn't sound like it's on. Amherst Media is the public comments?
Do you want to sit next to me for now?
Alright, so this is a motion for each warrant that needs to be approved. So there's three warrants, and it's structured based on the wording that we received from Mark Terry from ERIC, and it's similar to what you're signing, or the one person assigned at the region, but sort of turned into a motion for Amherst. So just to walk you through how this works for one of these, so the first one, the warrant number is S121119, which lines up with the date that the warrant was generated. And the motion is to authorize payables in the amount of the total amount of the warrant, and for the warrant dated 12/11/2019. And then it breaks the warrant down into the funding sources, or where the money's coming from to pay the expenditures in that warrant. So, in this particular case, the general fund expenses of $25,247.54, revolving fund expenses of $225, and withholding payments of $3,035. Withholding payments are when we withhold stuff from people's paychecks, that is not our money, but their money that's withheld, and then we cut the check to actually pay, whether it's health insurance, or life insurance, or anything like that. So that's how all three of these are structured. There was discussion about maybe some other type of report as well, to kind of give maybe a little more, besides the warrant, some other breakdown. And so there is a, I put these together, sorry. I put these together, these are a page from the warrant that breaks down the total amount by cost center. And so cost centers for us are basically the first part of our chart of accounts. And so like the general fund, if you look at the first page, there's a general fund section, and then within that general fund section, it will show you how much was paid from each of those cost centers. And so you kind of have to learn the cost centers, which, once you learn them, they're not too hard, but you kind of have to learn the cost centers. But that's a report that's already part of the warrant. And so, for example, what that would tell you is if you wanted to know how much we spent from utilities, that would tell you how much we spent from utilities. If you want to know special ed, it would tell you special ed, and so on, and so on. So, at some point, you know, we could send out a guide of the cost centers, and that maybe that would be a helpful tool for you to look at. And then that, combined with that summary, could be, you know, some more backup for the votes that you're going to take.
I see some nodding heads for the guide. I think that, you know, as much information as we can provide to the committee and the community is very helpful with that. And I think that, you know, the printout that we're looking at here looks very similar to the previous warrants that we used to sign.
Yeah, it's a page that used to be part of that.
Right, so this is coming from the MUNIS system.
Yep.
And just as a reminder for the committee, and anyone who may be watching, that typically these warrants, all of the expenses from the district go through a very intense internal review process. So, you know, the school committee is basically just signing off on these expenses, but it does not mean that this is the only point of review for these.
Right, absolutely. We have a purchase order system, so everything that gets there has a purchase order that has to be first completed by the department, and signed by the department head, and then comes to me, and reviewed by me, and signed by me, and if it's over $1,000, it's also reviewed and signed by the superintendent. So, for some things, it may be reviewed as many as three or four times before the authorization to purchase happens, and that has to be in place first before the expenditure can even take place.
Great. So this warrant review process is really just for, you know, public information, just to keep track of the things that are, the way the money's moving through.
And it allows us to actually release the checks. So we hold the checks until you vote to approve, in the new system, vote to approve the warrants, and once you do that, then we release the checks.
Great. I'm just going to pause for a second to see if the committee has any questions or comments. Mr. Dumling?
Yeah, um, does the motion require the reading of all of the details as itemized? All the stuff under this includes?
I think so. I'd not posit, but I think for tonight, to be safe, probably should just read the details.
Yeah, if we could get confirmation after the future, that would help, and do any of these warrants include payroll?
Not tonight.
Okay. If there are no further questions or comments for either Mr. Mangano or the superintendent, I will take a motion, and we have three different motions we want to make. Mr. Nakajima?
I move that the Amherst School Committee approve S121119, move to authorize payables in the amount of $28,822.54 for the warrant dated 12/11/2019. This includes general fund expenses of $25,247.54, revolving fund expenses of $225, and grant fund expenses, which in this case are not applicable, and withholding payments of $3,350.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. So it's been moved and approved, and seconded, and all those in favor? Okay, that warrant has been approved. I will take a motion for the second warrant. Mr. Dumling?
I move to authorize warrant S121319 to authorize payables in the amount of $124,245.82 for the warrant dated 12/13/19. This includes general fund expenses of $71,874.43, revolving fund expenses of $24,653.01, grant fund expenses of $6,213.47, withholding payments not applicable, capital fund payments of $19,904.91, and student activities of $1,600.
Mr. Dumling, I'm sorry, I'm wondering if you might want to reread the first two lines. I believe you said thousand twice, just to make sure we're being clear.
So can I withdraw my motion and just restate the whole motion?
Yes.
Okay, I withdraw my motion, and I move to approve, I move to authorize payables in the amount of $124,245.82 for the warrant dated 12/13/19. This includes general fund expenses in the amount of $71,874.43, revolving fund expenses of $24,653.01, grant fund expenses of $6,213.47, withholding payments not applicable, capital fund payments of $19,904.91, and student activities of $1,600.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. We have a second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Okay, that motion has been approved, and last one?
I move to authorize payables in the amount of $47,725.11 for the warrant dated 12/23/2019. This includes general fund expenses of $46,265.87, revolving fund expenses of not applicable, grant fund expenses also not applicable, withholding payments of $1,459.24, capital fund payments of not applicable, and student activities also not applicable.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nakajima. We have a second. All those in favor? And that warrant is approved. Thank you very much, Mr. Mangano.
Thank you, and one last thing, and this may not be welcome news. I talked to Mark Terry, and you also still have to sign the warrant. So you still have to sign it, even though it's voted. So everyone who voted in the affirmative should sign it, and we'll take those back.
So that's what is in this blue folder?
Yeah, all three of those warrants are in those.
Okay, so we can pass this down. Does it have to be signed during open session, or can it be signed after?
That I don't think so. I think the vote is what has to happen.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mangano, and we have a final motion. Mr. Nakajima?
I move to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. All those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Seeing the presence of a quorum, I call this meeting of the Amherst Palom Regional School Committee to order.
Seeing the presence of a quorum, I call this meeting of the Union 26 School Committee to order.
And actually, this meeting is being recorded? It's still recorded, right?
Yes.
Meaning not live broadcast?
Oh, no, it's live broadcast.
Oh, it's being live broadcast?
Go to Ohio, things happen.
How wonderful. Neat? Yes, well, anyway, so I feel, I guess I'm saying this for the benefit of the audience then, because if you're watching at home, you probably already know that. Okay, so we don't have minutes to approve. You know what time it is?
6:33.
6:33. Okay, so we want to do the public comment when public comment period is, and so with the, with the acclamation or assent of the committee, I'd like to move the Amherst Palom Regional School Committee Chairs' update forward on the agenda to item four, and then switch it with the announcements and public comments. Is that amenable? Seeing nodding and amenable and assent, so it'll be brief, it actually won't take the next seven minutes. I just want the, for those in the public who have been following our meetings closely, they will see that on at least three occasions, we have had executive sessions in which the purpose of the executive session was denoted as being due to an allegation involving personnel under the supervision of the school committee, namely Michael Morris. And I am hereby publicly announcing on behalf of the school committee that that investigation matter is concluded entirely. There was an investigation conducted that did not find any evidence or support whatsoever for the allegations, and so the committee voted to accept that report and considers the matter entirely closed. And that's that. The other thing, I don't, do you have any report? Vice Chair and Acting Chair? No? Because I don't have anything else. Except for Buckeye apparently has peanut butter in the middle of his chocolate, and is an absolutely delicious treat. Do you know what time it is?
It is 6:35.
Aren't there any announcements from committee members, knowing that we can clearly move forward with that? I would love to state that since, you're not a committee member.
I was.
You can't raise your hand like that.
I can raise it.
You can raise it, but doesn't mean you're going to call them. I, I think that both on other committees on which I've served, as well as this one, I think Anastasia Donas has done an extraordinary job, and, you know, I've worked with a bunch of really great school committee members, but none better than her. And due to my role as Chair of the Regional Committee, I've had more opportunities than either one of us probably cared to have to talk and figure out what we were going to do as Chairs of prospective committees, and how we were going to move forward with things. And always I have found you to be thoughtful, deeply committed to the district, savvy, and a nice person to work with, too. And I think in the end, since times are often tough, being a nice and decent person is one of the best traits you can have, because it helps, it helps make the medicine go down of whatever you're dealing with a little bit better. And so I really appreciate your service, and have appreciated serving with you, and even though I'm looking forward to all future members, I will not look forward to them as much as I enjoyed working with you. Maybe as much, not more.
Thank you, Mr. Nakajima. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
What time is it now, by the way? If I couldn't keep going on with that, that was embarrassing.
6:37.
Yes.
We do have approval of minutes.
No, no, there are no minutes.
There are no minutes, okay.
Dr. Morris?
Can I stay with that theme?
If you wish.
Which is, tonight is also, in addition to Mr. Donas's last meeting, it's also Mr. Mangano's last meeting, and the role of Finance Director, so I would like to similarly acknowledge his role and contributions to the district. I think I'll start with where you ended, which is being a nice person, and a kind person, which matters. And so in addition to all the financial pieces, and shepherding four towns through multiple conversations over multiple years of assessment methodology, and all of that goes into community engagement, meeting with PGOs, doing new things to engage different communities, LPAC, CPAC, in the budget process, I think he's done it, in my opinion, he's done it with incredible grace, and also incredible creativity. And I think that was acknowledged at the four-town meeting, for those of you who are able to attend the four-town meeting, and that's not a group that does standing ovations for too many people. And they did, and it wasn't planned, it wasn't, you know, I didn't tip anyone off, other than Sean, who was frustrated with me for acknowledging him at that, at that meeting, but I want to just, that's not on camera, so I want to publicly acknowledge Mr. Mangano's role in the district, and we will miss him greatly.
Are there any further announcements about awesome Shaunis? Or Anastasia, either one? They're welcome at this point. And also, just if anyone knows again what time it is, just let me know.
6:38.
What, 6:38? You can misread, I can, I can't read the clock that well, I could easily say it was 6:40 from there, but I will not.
It's close.
I salute the Amherst High School football team. I was away during their valiant effort and loss, but it was, it was neat to see them get that far. What other championships do we have this, this fall? Or near championships?
We had Western Mass championships, some girls' cross-country, and our boys' hockey is off to a really strong start, 3-1-0, so that's a strong start. And what's neat, intentionally extending this a bit, but is that it's a partnership between Amherst, Hadley, and Palmer, so we have students, as schools in Western Massachusetts, high schools have gotten smaller, when it's sports like hockey, which are pretty material intensive in terms of rink time, and we've partnered, and smaller towns to keep their players, their student athletes having access to sports, and this is a neat one. We don't have many three-town, I think it may be our only three-town team, and it's worked beautifully with the student athletes from Hadley and Palmer. So just compliments to the coach, Mr. Russo, who's also a middle school teacher, but to the students for coming together.
That's great. Yes, Mr. Dumling?
We have a similar arrangement with Granby for football and some other sports, is that correct?
We do, we do. I'm not sure that we have three towns, I could be wrong on that, but I'm also intentionally extending this, and it just went to 6:40 on my clock.
I just looked and saw myself. Okay, so if there are no further announcements from the school committee, or from the superintendent, we'll move to open public comment. If anyone has public comment, they can come forward. I am not, just for the purposes of people watching live at home, I don't see anyone sitting here. Driving through town, by the way, I'd say it was actually very, very quiet, exceptionally quiet, as quiet as I've ever seen it in years. So it means there really wasn't any traffic to detain anyone from getting here, that were bicycling, walking, or driving. So with that, I will close public comment period, and remind people again that they can email, use snail mail to correspond with us if they wish. So this now means at 6:41 or 2, that we are significantly ahead of our schedule. For those watching at home, it's mentioned that the times that are listed are approximate, but in this case, the moving up of the business is primarily because, you know, we didn't, we didn't have minutes to approve, we didn't have any much announcements, no wave announcements from the committee, and we didn't have any public comments. So with the, again, the approval of the, of the committee, or general assent, I'm going to move forward with the next item on our agenda. And we will. Proposed Superintendent Contract Discussion and Possible Vote, Contractor Superintendent Michael Morris, I know there was a robust discussion about this at the last meeting, this is also an item that is noted, has been noted as an item of discussion in, for planning purposes, for executive sessions and multiple meetings throughout the fall. So I'm hoping there have been multiple opportunities for the public to be able to follow this, engage, learn from last week's meeting, as well as associated newspaper articles about it, as we move forward with our current discussion. So, the item has been, it's in the packet, it's in the packet that's available online, and is also not, I want to say not at all, so I want those who've been here in the state to nod their heads that I'm right, it has not at all been changed since the last time it was publicly discussed. It has not. Wonderful. So that means that what you see is what you get, in terms of the contract. What this does is this essentially ratifies that the current contract will run through the end of this fiscal year, and that immediately upon the end of this fiscal or school year, will commence a new three-year contract for Dr. Morris. That contract would run through June 30th, 2023, and would be automatically renewed for a further period unless there is notice from the committees by December 31st, 2022. The contract does include a couple, obviously, it obviously does compensation, but in other ways, it includes a couple of changes from the current contract they had, but the effective July 1st, 2020, the superintendent would be paid a gross salary, annual salary of $163,140. Effective July 1st, 2021, the superintendent would be paid $172,700. And then the committees would meet and confer with the superintendent about any raise for the third year, if this contract is approved. And in addition to that, the superintendent would continue to be eligible, and would receive longevity payments, as well as a lump sum in recognition of his doctorate, and as is also the case in the current contract, would receive reimbursement for life insurance premium payments. The termination severance clauses largely remain the same, with a change that clarifies the terms under which the superintendent could be removed, to say the superintendent is removed as a result of willful misconduct, willful dereliction of duty, egregious persistent documented performance failures, act of embezzlement, fraud against the districts, or commission of a felonious act, or death that the committees could pursue it to, the termination clauses that elsewhere outline how that process would be pursued, could terminate without pay. Otherwise, it defines a term of severance for the superintendent of 10 months if they are terminated without any of the causes listed in Section 4D of the contract. The current contract didn't actually provide a level of clarity over these elements. By the way, I was, just for the sake, for the benefit of the committees, I was told you didn't actually read these literal language last week, so I'm hoping that's true, because I'm doing it now so that the public has clarity over the terms of the contract. If I'm repeating something, just wave your hands and I'll stop talking, because I don't mean to show up clock or something like that. The other clauses in the contract, except for the dates by which, for example, later in five renewal, the date by which the superintendent has to be notified, are all updated, they're otherwise similar. It also further points out in that Section 5, that though the contract can be extended once, essentially nothing is done by December 31st, 2022, that, that it only can go once, and then, under, under all circumstances, the contract would have to be, the contract had to be negotiated at that time. My record, my memory is that, is that similar to a current term in the contract, actually. And that is what I recall is new in this contract, again, except for any minor date changes, substantively, I think that's true. Mr. Dumling?
So there was one other item of note that was added, and under Section 11, fringe benefits, 11D, I'll just read the text. In consideration of the extremely high number of night meetings each year, the superintendent may take up to two days per month as compensation leave. Said days may be taken in full or half-day increments, must be used within 68 calendar days from the month the days were announced.
Thank you, I forgot about that one. And essentially, just for the public's benefit, if many of you, and this may be even true of members of the committee, may work in an office in which if you work at night, you know, say you work till midnight to get something done, your boss may say, "Don't worry about it, come in at 11 tomorrow, and you're fine." And as the contract is currently written, and actually as it's enforced, because Mr. Dumling and I had a conversation with Dr. Morris and said, "So you don't, you don't," and the answer was a good answer, it was the right answer, but it means you don't informally take any sort of comp time if you're burning the clock really late. And his answer was, "No, I don't do that, it's not in my contract." And that's just setting aside the practicality of, you know, kids get on buses every morning, so logically you end up needing and wanting to get up anyway, but, but the point is, you also can't take off at 3:00 in the afternoon, or something in the afternoons. So this allows, this A, allows for that to be done, but also B, it brackets it, because as noted by Mr. Dumling's language, it's in a contract, it's time limited in terms of the expiration of the comp time itself, and it also is limited in terms of the amount of comp time that could be taken. But what this essentially does is if the superintendent burns the clock really late, and really, based on his duties, has the ability to leave at 2:00 in the afternoon on a Friday, he's now going to be free to be able to do that, and not have to stay at work because we didn't let him. I know the committee knows this, because you already reviewed the contract, but public doesn't. Any else?
That was a good summary.
Thank you. Are there other, other comments from the committee? I know you did have a discussion about this last week. Are there any further comments? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion, if that were forthcoming. In this case, by the way, to be clear, that would be for the Regional Committee, not for, not for the Union. Mr. Donas?
I just wanted to state again, for the record, for, you know, folks who may not have been watching our last meeting, but are watching tonight, or will be watching in the future, that this contract was discussed at length and in great detail, both in executive session, and then we also made our statements last, at our last meeting, regarding our impressions of this contract. And so I think, you know, I still, everything is exactly what we discussed, and how I remember this. So I would like to move to approve the superintendent's contract of employment for the Amherst Palom Regional Schools. And I don't know if I need to say for the period of time, or is that enough?
I think it's enough.
Okay.
As presented, or something.
As presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Then, move by, or don't, a second, by McDonald. Any further discussion for the Regional Committee? Seeing none, seeing none, all those members of the Regional Committee who approve the contract signify, raising your hand aye. Okay, that's one, two, three, one, two, three, four, five, six. Are there nays? Any nays? One nay. So, great, the, the contract is approved.
And I would take a motion for Union 26.
Anyone would like to make a motion?
I move, so, I move to approve the contract for Superintendent Michael Morris for the, as, as reviewed.
Are there motions or a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand, signifying aye. And it is unanimous, 5-0. Thank you, Dr. Morris. Do you have anything you want to say?
I do, thank you. I'll be brief. So I want to start by saying I've truly enjoyed my tenure over the last three-plus years in the role, and I'm honored and humbled by your vote to allow me to continue in the role until 2023, as I was by many of your kind words at the previous meeting. I chose not to speak at that meeting, I thought it was more appropriate to speak at this point. With your active support and guidance, I believe that the talented staff members in our districts are doing incredibly impactful work to benefit our students, and that's consistent with your mission, you know, the school committee policy AD. And I'll, I'll read an excerpt, "To seek, to seek to create an environment that achieves equity for all students, and ensures that each student is a successful learner, is fully respected, and learns to respect others. Each of our schools is wonderfully dynamic in our three districts, and now has a developed, articulated plan to realize their potential to support every student. We have record-high wait lists for families wanting to enter our schools via school choice, strong support from our member communities, exciting new programs such as Comenantes at Fort River, and resorted practices at both the middle school and high school. We're back in the MSBA pipeline to hopefully, to transform the infrastructure of our elementary schools in Amherst. We've removed ourselves from the financial cliff stemming from an overreliance of school choice funds in Pelham. We have seeked and successfully applied for grants to supplement our budgets to support our initiatives. We have significantly increased the diversity of our staff at all levels, and we have an even brighter future ahead of us, along with a tremendous amount of thoughtful planning and hard work. None of that would be possible without the strong leadership of the school committees, a dedicated and talented administrative team, and an outstanding staff working with our students. I'm very proud to be a member of this district, and to be a steward of the process to ensure that our schools benefit every single student who walks through our halls." Thank you.
Thank you. So we have another item, item 6B, Finance Director Discussion and Possible Vote on the Appointment of a Finance Director. Do you want to introduce this, Dr. Morris?
Sure, I think for the public, even though it was in the packet, I'm just going to read the memo that's on the back page, I know it's lengthy, but I do think it's important to read verbatim, or as close as I can successfully do that. So as you know, Sean Mangano was departing from the district next week, December 31st, 2019. This fall, the district- Uh, this fall, the district initiated, and we want to thank Mr. Mangano for giving the lead time for us to complete a search, um, it's important to note, um, frankly, that hasn't happened, uh, in every community when finance directors leave, so I appreciate that. The district initiated surf and search, and Doreen Cunningham facilitated this, uh, in the fall, she posted the position on schoolspring.com, indeed.com, uh, we reached out to the Massachusetts, Massachusetts Association of School Business Officials, or MASVO, Listserve, and currently there's a shortage of individuals going into this field across the Commonwealth, so outreach phone calls were also made to several candidates in the area who expressed initial interest and to others who were listed as being licensed in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. In total, six candidates completed applications for the position, there were screening and interview committees assembled to review applications and interview candidates, the interview committee, which consisted of six individuals, unanimously recommended Dr. Douglas Slaughter for the position, the recommendation is being supported by the administration, and we're bringing this recommendation appointment for you for approval as per School Committee Policy BDC. Dr. Slaughter is in his thirteenth year of the district, having worked in the information systems as database and analyst, and his current role is Assistant Director. In this role, he worked closely with the Human Resources and Business Offices to implement and maintain personnel and payroll software, in addition to his work with our student information software and database systems. Through his work, he has been integral in aiding the preparation of financial and personnel reports for use by all levels of the organization, including the, the many required by DESI for all three of our districts. Augmenting that experience has been his longstanding commitment to community service through his membership on Amherst Finance Committee, Joint Capital Planning Committee, Select Board, Audit Committee, and Advisory Board Representative to the Pioneer Valley Transit Authority. Dr. Slaughter holds bachelor's and master's degree from University of Missouri, and a doctoral degree in chemical engineering from the University of Massachusetts. He holds multiple licenses from DESI, including Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, and he's been granted a waiver from DESI for the role of School Business Administrator that lasts until June thirtieth, twenty nine, ooh, that should be twenty twenty, I apologize. I still can never really get used to the, when the year transitions, um, so, I apologize. Dr. Slaughter slated to complete the requirements for licensure well ahead of the expiration of the current waiver, and we would expect that license to be, uh, achieved, uh, at the end of next month, at the end of January twenty twenty. Mr. Mangano has graciously agreed to continue to support Dr. Slaughter if the appointment is approved. In conclusion, I recommend Dr. Slaughter for the position of Finance Director for the districts, given his background, experience, and dedication, I believe his appointment will be a benefit to our districts.
Okay, do you have anything further, I mean, it's rather complete statement.
Yes. Uh, no, I think, uh, both Mr. Mangano and Dr. Slaughter are both here in case there are questions from the committees, so thank you both for coming out on, um, on the twenty-third of December, um, but I think that's as much as I'll share at the moment.
So, what, um, I think we'd welcome right now is any questions from the committee? Mr. Demling?
It's not really a question, just a, just a, just a comment that, um, from having, um, seen Dr. Slaughter engaging in public service in, in Amherst, he has a, I think a really well-earned reputation as, as hardworking, knowledgeable, and, and kind person who really deeply cares about public service, so I was very pleased to see him put forward, uh, this position.
Maybe perhaps the only other thing I'd add is that there was a school committee member on the, um, interview committee as well. Not that I need to get into that, but I did want to note that when we, when we have interviews for these types of positions, we always encourage and try to solicit school committee members to be on the front end of it as well.
So I guess one question I have is, um, you, you mentioned that, uh, he should be fully certified very soon, as early as late January, but certainly no later than June thirtieth. I guess we, we, I'm assuming you'll be monitoring that and giving us an update at the earliest convenient opportunity, in terms of that occurring, and if there's any hitch that comes in, in terms of, I mean, my assumption would be, if for some reason that didn't happen, you'd have to either do another search, or extend, and I think you'd want to know that as soon as possible, right?
That's right, and we'll be in frequent communication with the committee on that topic.
Okay, sounds great. Anything further?
Oh. I've got a couple of questions for Mr. Mangano. Just curious how, how our electric bus is doing, I have to ask one more time. Is it still running like it should?
Electric bus? The electric bus is doing well, last I heard, we actually, I did hear about it recently, because we're doing a bus contract, um, and we had our vendors meeting where all the different bus vendors came in, and so we talked about the electric bus, but last, um, I knew it's doing pretty well.
And the second question is...
Girls' locker room is in the capital plan?
Yes.
I can just preempt that, that question? Next one?
The third one is, how are we doing with electricity and the solar panels in South Deerfield, or, wait, where are they?
Um, so we've been getting the, so, um, Mr. Sullivan's referring to the off-taker agreement that we signed with a, a solar array that went up in Deerfield, um, we actually signed it like five years ago, but it, it did go on.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been, um, in effect since the beginning of, either twenty nineteen or sometime twenty eighteen, but we haven't gotten the net metering credits, um, so we get about thirty thousand dollars, um, each year off of our electric bill because of that, um, and in terms of overall electricity, again, part of our capital plan is to, if approved, um, see what else we can do in the districts, on the middle school roof, in the parking lot, um, maybe other ground-mounted areas, um, to see what other potentials out there for electricity. Right now, we get about half of our electricity consumption covered by the solar array in Deerfield, which leaves another half that we could look at.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And so by implication, I assume that Dr. Slaughter is comfortable and looks forward to answering such questions in the future when the moment arises?
Absolutely.
So, it's a think-on-your-feet moment, you come in with one thing, and you never know what you're going to get from the committee. And actually, and actually, Mr. Mangano, you've done a very, you've done a wonderful job of answering those impromptu questions, and also making sure that the girls' locker room is finally being rid of any... I, uh, but all seriousness, if there are other questions or comments, if, um, if not, uh, I would entertain a motion, if one is forthcoming.
So moved.
I entertain a, actually, full motion, a statement, a motion.
I move that we accept the appointment of Dr. Slaughter for the position of Finance Director for the district.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sullivan. Any further comment? And this, by the way, again, next, we have to do, this is for the region, not for the Union, uh, okay, all those in favor? Carries, okay, it is one, two, three, four, five, six, uh, any nays? Any abstentions? One abstention. So it carries seven, zero, one abstention. Yes?
I just want to state, uh, for the record, that, uh, Dr. Slaughter is actually my neighbor, and, uh, we share a lawn together, you know, great neighbor, um, I'm happy that he has been, uh, appointed to this, but I just didn't feel that it was correct for me to, to vote for him.
Fair enough.
Uh, now to interchange similar motion for Union twenty-six?
Um, I move to accept the recommended, uh, appointment of Dr. Slaughter in the position of Finance Director for Union twenty-six.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand, signifying aye. Proposed? N, uh, abstained. It passes four, zero, one, with, uh, Mr. Adonis abstaining.
Congratulations. If you have anything to say, you can, you do not need to.
I'll be more brief than Mike. Thank you all, uh, I appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve the district in this new way, and hopefully I'll, uh, be able to support both you and the superintendent and the mission that we're seeking to, to, uh, to exemplify. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, with that, I'm going to go first?
Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Mr. Adonis moves to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. McDonald, all those in favor of the motion that cannot be debated, please raise your hand, and it passes five, zero, we are adjourned.
Okay, do you, uh, we have a motion for the region?
So moved.
It's moved to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, moved and second, and also it isn't a sort of a not debatable, all those in favor of adjourned, signifying, raising a hand, carries unanimously, we are adjourned, happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays.